Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. It's been a while since I've come to Fairfield, but I'm looking forward to it and looking forward to an interesting discussion of issues. Obviously, our purpose this evening is to provide you with an opportunity to hear the candidates' views on issues facing Fairfield. The format that we're using for tonight's debate is designed to allow the candidates time to discuss the issues. The only rule is that the total time used by each candidate by the conclusion of the debate is constantly the same. I'm going to be posing the questions which have come from the lead-in audience. And as was mentioned, if you wish to pose a question, please write clearly on the index card. They'll be picked up by the ushers and screened by a committee for appropriate answers. The candidates are not restricted to one or two-minute responses. Instead, they can spend as little or as much time as they feel is appropriate to discuss each issue. Our goal, obviously, is to encourage some debate. They will take turns being the first to respond to a question, and following the question period, each candidate will make a two-minute closing statement. Members of the legal unit voters are serving as timers for the debates, and they will keep the candidates in the informed of the time expended. I would also like to request that there please be no applause or other demonstration of support or opposition during the debate. We really don't have a reasonable time to give to the candidates, and so it's important to hear from them and not from the audience, if you don't want to. And, of course, all applause as well. And, of course, it's important with every public event these days, please, 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 check your cell phones or any other devices that you have in your pocket are turned off. And so now, let's go to the debate, and it's my pleasure to introduce the candidates for First Electmen. My ame he it right, excuse me, is Brenda Cuthbert, and to her right, Michael Settle. And so now into the debate, and the first candidate to respond will be Ms. Cuthbert. And the question is, what lessons can be learned from the Julian Pile situation? I think I'm sure you could get the microphones closer to you. Okay. Karen?
(inaudible)
How about you? Okay. Go ahead.
So was your question, what lessons can we?
What lessons can be learned from the Julian pile?
So, well, first of all, good evening, and I'm glad you're all here. I think there are a lot of lessons to be learned about what happened and what continues to come out about what happened at the Julian pile. I think the number-one lesson is that we need to make sure that the chief executive of our town provides the appropriate oversight over the employees and town operations. And I think the most important lesson to be learned is that our town needs to follow the charter in all activities and everything that we do. So there, I could go on and on, because there's quite a few things, lessons that we could learn, but I think those are the most important lessons. We need to follow the charter. It was written for a reason, and a lot of the, a lot of the things that came up during this has shown that the charter was violated repeatedly. So I would, that would be my answer.
Mr. Cuthbert, you were taking the mic. You didn't mind the rubber. He was quite involved with the charter. Mr. Cuthbert, your response to the same question?
Oh, I think I would agree that there are a host of lessons that can be learned from a standpoint of, and I think we have. We've already gone back and changed our purchasing procedures. We've gone back and realized that our employees didn't feel comfortable speaking up at certain points, so we have installed a whistleblower hotline, both for email and phones, that's anonymous, so that folks...
Do you want to pull the microphone closer to you?
I'm sorry. Let me go back. We can have a host of questions, a host of lessons, I think, that can be learned from that, starting with the fact we've gone back and changed our purchasing procedures to make sure some of the things that slipped through when Julian responded, the RFP, don't happen again. I think that we've also gone back and added a whistleblower hotline to make sure that our employees feel comfortable stepping up with that. I'm going to go back and ask the Ethics Commission to review our ethics policy, to see where we can enhance that and also include better training for our employees, so to be fair to them. They know what to expect and what they should be able to step up about. I think that we've also gotten proposals from both caucuses and the RTM about setting up a, hiring an independent consultant to come back in and review all of this, to make sure that we go through it in detail. And I think that will be something we'll definitely act on, and I also think that, or believe that the Board of Finance, with Board of Selectment approval, has already set up an independent audit group to go back and look at some of the financial transactions, to make sure every control we should have in place, we have in place, so that this never happens again.
Excuse me. Yes, I would argue that those controls were already put in place, and that if the charter had simply been followed, it wouldn't have happened. The First Electmen is a part of the Purchasing Authority, and RFP was signed with no information, no numbers on it. There was no contract that was brought before the Board of Selectmen. If those things were put in place, this wouldn't have happened. So I think we had the proper controls. We just needed proper oversight by the First Electmen.
All right. Back to the next question.
Yeah, I think that's a gross overstatement, if I could. I think that the charter was followed. From the standpoint of the RFP, our attorneys who are suing Julian have confirmed that that RFP has the standing of a contract with a signed letter, and it had all the terms needed in that. So if we can sue Julian and it hasn't been thrown out at this point, it certainly has the standing of a contract. From a standpoint of the contracts overall, we had an extensive discussion of that at the Board of Select meeting, or Board of Finance meeting the other night. And I think that one of the things we found is that this clause in our contract, or in our charter, we haven't been, we've gone back and reviewed Board of Selectmen minutes for 40 years, and haven't been able to find a time when it was included. So it was something that wasn't followed, wasn't really included. We went back to minutes of the Charter revision, going back to Selectmen Jackie Durrell, and realizing it was talked about, but the questions came up, they weren't resolved, they weren't answered, and it wasn't included in our past practices or our standard protocol.
Just to, just to be clear, there was an RFP signed with no numbers on it. We, in our, in our charter, it says that a contract is to be signed by the First Electmen. It needs to be brought before the Board of Selectmen. It wasn't. On top of that, there were four fraudulent bonds filed in the Purchasing Department. The First Electmen is part of the Purchasing Department. No one checked to see if they were valid or not. These are simple things that need to be done and should have been done. To say that it's okay to violate the Charter because people potentially may have done that before is just, is just wrong. So I'm sorry, I just believe that there were controls in place that could have been taken oversight, that could have been taken by the chief executive of our community, that were not taken.
Ready for a next question?
I think so, yes.
Mr. Cuthbert, you're first to respond. What makes you optimistic about Fairfield's future?
Great many things. When I look at everything that's going on in town, when I look at the economic developments taking place, from the Community Theater to the Thorpe Street, to the Stratfield Market, to Exide Battery Factory going on, I'm looking at all this development taking place. I'm looking at the ratings that our town has got, number one in being business-friendly in the state, number one in sustainability, an A-plus place to live. We're being called by a senior vice president of People's Bank as a model for the state of Connecticut. When I go to our school programs and look at the quality of music, the quality of singing, the quality of education that our students are getting, I am thrilled with what's taking place at that level, and I look at the future that Fairfield has, the potential that Fairfield has. We're petitioned perfectly, so hopefully, when the state starts this turnaround, that we can springboard off of that, but if they don't, we're in the strongest financial shape in our history. We've just come through a period with the lowest five-year tax increase. We are doing more for our seniors. We're investing in education. We haven't kicked the can down the road. We've lowered our long-term liabilities. I'm very excited about what's taking place, and I'm very much looking forward to what's going to come out of our strategic plan and help guide us in the future.
Ms. Cuthbert?
Could you repeat the question?
Mr. Cuthbert, you're first to respond. What makes you optimistic about Fairfield's future?
I'm very optimistic about Fairfield's future. We have a lot of good people that serve in local office in the town and do follow the protocols and procedures. We have so much to be blessed for in this community, and I'm looking forward to leading the town, because I think I can do a better job leading the town into the future. I think we can build on our economic development. I think I'm looking forward to working with the developers at the Metro Center to finally develop it after 12 years and bring some taxable space to our community to help offset the residential tax burden. But we have so much to be thankful for. We have so many good people in this community. We have awesome schools, wonderful students, and we have great teachers. We just need someone who's a little bit more passionate, I think, and a little bit more, a little bit more engaged.
Can you answer that question?
Not at this time. Thanks.
Okay. Ms. Cuthbert, you're next to respond first, and the question is, for Black Rock Turnpike study recommended changes including three roundabouts that would cost over $23 million. Do you support this call, and are there other things that could be done instead?
So I know that the community has been surveyed on this, and I also took the survey. I live close to Black Rock Turnpike, and it does need improvement. The roundabouts, I'm a little concerned about the plan, and I think that we need to look at it more closely. I think we need to take those plans and have some town hall meetings on it, because I'm not quite sure that that is exactly going to be the fix we're going to need, and $23 million is a lot of money.
Mr. Cuthbert?
Yes, I had concerns about the roundabouts, too, and that's why I went to the town hall meetings, to listen to what the consultants had to say. These are not your grandfather's traffic circles, if you will. When you look at how they've been implemented in other towns, they seem to work pretty well. We need something, we have to have a plan in place, and that's what's exciting about this plan, because if we're going to get federal and state funding, we've got to have a plan in place so we can point out what to do. This plan lets us, gives us the ability to implement part of this. We don't have to implement the entire plan at one time, so that means it doesn't have to cost the full dollar amount all at one time. But I think we need to do a lot more in terms of pedestrian safety, in terms of biking safety, as well as traffic ingestion up at Black Rock, and I think this is a great step forward.
Can you answer that question? Okay. Mr. Cuthbert, you're first to respond to this one. How do we prevent corporations from running for-profit facilities in residential zones without any process or procedure protecting their group home status?
All right. Thank you. I think we can do that from a standpoint of corporations. I think the challenge is, when they come in under the group home or medical treatment clause in the state contracts, or state statutes, rather, I think these state statutes override our town rules and regs. We set up our regs to protect our town, to protect our neighborhoods, to set up the community that we want. When I've gone out and talking to folks, the number-one thing they respond to when you ask them what they like best about Fairfield is community. And I'm really upset that the state just can come in and let that happen, let these overrides. I think that some of these homes came in six or seven years ago. I know I met with neighbors, and state representative Devlin at that time, but there haven't been any changes in the state statute since then. I think that it's important that we work together on this, and I think it's important that the state open up their process and come together. If they want to require us to include these or integrate this type of facility in our community, fine, but give us the time to put together a plan. Give us a time to figure out how it fits best in our community, so that this doesn't happen again, and this doesn't scare our neighborhoods, raise concerns about property values, and raise concerns about our community.
So actually, the state statute has been unclear, and because this is a new thing to our town, and really, actually, in our state, there really wasn't any work on it. So it's unclear about medical facilities versus group homes. The town did grant a group home permit to the applicants who were not applying for a group home. They were applying for a medical facility. And frankly, I think there should have been better oversight or more review of this application at the time, because when someone's applying for a group home, that's obviously protected under federal law. Those are people who live there and with supportive services. A medical facility, any medical facility, regardless, regardless if it's, if it's a rehab, or if it's a treatment center, or whatever it is, is really a commercial operation, and commercial operations should not be in residential zones. So right there, I didn't understand why the town gave a permit for a group home when it wasn't a group home, or at least look into it a little bit more, ask questions. You know, where are, where, who are you, and what are you going to be doing at this group home? Because it really wasn't a group home status. At the same time, I've worked with the delegation, Representative Devlin, Senator Wong, and Representative McCarthy Vahey, to ask that the Certificate of Need process be held, the public hearing be held here in our community. But there's a lot of work that's going to need to be done, because this is a very, it's a complicated issue, and that needs to be addressed by our state legislature, and it wouldn't have happened unless this sort of thing happened. People weren't looking at it. There are so many complicated issues at the state levels. Most people realize, we have massive deficits in our state, a whole host of issues coming that come at the legislature, and it's a part-time legislature. But because we've learned about this, we've been doing a lot of work on it. But at the same time, the town's building, the town's permitting, zoning department just shouldn't have granted a group home permit to someone who clearly wasn't looking to build a group home.
If I could follow up on that just quickly. I do want to point out that I am working with other First Electmen and reaching out to them to see what we can do from a unified group or unified town standpoint to raise this issue to a higher level, as well as I'm reaching out to some local realtors to do that. And in terms of the town planning and zoning, I think the ZBA reviewed that process and ruled that, given the way the state statutes read, that was proper at this time.
All right. My question, Ms. Cuthbert, you're first. How informed are you with the 2020 property assessment process and the criteria established to determine assessment?
So I am informed about it, and we are coming up on an assessment, which concerns me. And so the assessment will start, and homes will start being assessed over the next year. What concerns me is the property values have decreased in town, especially in some areas of our, of our town. Most notably, I would say, in the Greenfield Hill area. The properties have been on the market for a long time. A lot of properties have sold for less than they're worth, and so people are concerned in town that that will resonate to higher property taxes for everyone else in the community. So I think it's paramount, and very important, to be working to build our grand list, to make sure that we are getting more taxable space, especially at places like the Metro Center, so that we can help ease the burden, because that shift to other communities that are higher-priced is really going to hurt everyone. I mean, when your property, when your taxes are high, because your assessment is high, it hurts the overall value of all the properties in town. So it's a very important issue that we need to be looking at, and we must, we must be prioritizing our economic development in a, in a serious way in town.
Mr. Cuthbert?
No question that we need to prioritize economic development, and we have. We've been declared the most business-friendly town in the state. In the last three years, we've had more grand list growth than in the prior seven years, so that's moving us in the right direction. Places like Westport, Milford, Greenwich, you can see empty storefronts, higher vacancy rates. We have a much more vibrant local economy. We have a 90% commercial occupancy rate versus 75% for the, most of the town. If you look around, the Community Theater, Stratfield Market, Exide Battery Factory, Thorpe Street for Seniors, Trademark 1 and 2, The Knights of Columbus, three recent assisted living facilities, we're really picking up steam. And this week, our Economic Development Department received an award for having some of the best practices in the state of Connecticut.
So just to be clear, the grand list has shrunk 7.4% over the last 10 years. That's not good. And to compare us to Westport, Westport has actually built up their corporate grand list and has kept taxes flat over the last five years. So we're not on par with Westport. Westport is really doing much better than we are. And I think the other thing was economic development. So we received a, an award for the best business development. We received an award yesterday for economic development. Two weeks before an election, the Democrat governor gave the First Electmen an award on economic development. I don't know. It just seems a little interesting to me.
Mr. Cuthbert?
So again, our grand list has shrunk 7.4%. That's a real statistic. We entered into a tri-party agreement 12 years ago, and there hasn't been, there's not one taxable square foot of corporate space at the Metro Center to offset the residential tax burden. To me, that doesn't deserve an award.
Mr. Cuthbert, you have something to add?
Yeah, if Ms. Cuthbert had read the press release, she'd realize it wasn't the governor gave out the award, but a statewide economic development group. And second, she's going back. She's going back 10 years, because the grand list shrunk 11% back in 2010. Since I took office eight years ago, the grand list has grown, and the last three years, it's grown more than it did in the last seven. We're moving in the right direction. I listed some of the projects involved in that. And all you have to do is drive around town and see the construction in terms of what's taking place. We're making progress in the right area.
Next question, and Ms. Cuthbert, you're first to respond. What would you do to make sure that senior-friendly housing is readily available to our seniors?
I know my parents moved out of town because there wasn't enough senior-friendly housing in town. And when I talk about senior-friendly, it's affordable and senior-friendly. We're looking at certain developments down in Thorpe Street that is going to address part of that, because it's senior-friendly and close to downtown, so it provides some walkability into our, part of our transitory development. But I think we need to work with developers and look at what takes place. It's going to be a little challenge for us, because one of the ways to make it affordable is we've got to probably increase the density and look at providing elevators, enclosed parking, and some other things that are important assets in the senior-friendly component. But it's very important to me that that is, continues to be a priority, but we've got to get our developers educated. I think we're coming through our Plan of Conservation and Development, and hopefully, that should give us some guidance in terms of what takes place, as well as our strategic plan that, again, should reinforce these guidelines in terms of what we can do to help keep our seniors in town.
So I, this is actually something that hits me personally. So 12 years ago, I had a similar situation, which most people in town have. They have elderly parents who can't stay in their home, they can't keep up with the house, they can't keep up with the taxes. And so what I did, and my husband and I did, was move my mother into our home. So Trumbull has done some creative things with allowing accessory apartments for parents and things, and maybe smaller, like, sub-houses in the back of a property for people's parents, so that they could stay, you know, close by their family, and they don't have the burden of the taxes and all of that. We need to work, I would like to see our community work with our zoning, to start looking at these creative ideas and to look at implementing them with our zoning regulations. Seniors are having a really difficult time in our town. Even when, when, when it's said that our taxes have only gone up 2% a year, that's a hit to seniors, especially people who are on fixed incomes. I talk to people every two years when I am campaigning as a legislator, and there are people who are really struggling, who've built their entire lives in our town, and they're having trouble staying in their small homes, because the taxes are going up. So we have to make this a real priority. We must, because we must work to diversify and maintain the diversity in our community. We can't just have all young families or wealthy families. We need to make sure that we're taking care of our seniors, who are having a difficult time staying in our town.
Okay. Next question, and Ms. Cuthbert, you're first to respond. What criteria would you use to evaluate applicants who are appointed town boards?
Well, obviously, their resumes. I think what's happened a lot over the years is that appointments to important town boards sometimes become political, based on who's appointing them, which is typically the First Electmen's office. I think we need to make sure that people are actually qualified to take on these appointments. We have some very important boards that are appointed, and so that I, I think we should review it, and maybe it's even a good idea to work with the Ethics Committee to try to come up with a better criteria, to make sure that we are appointing people who are qualified.
Yes, there are very few boards that are just left to the First Electmen. Most are by the Board of Selectmen, and some are with the Board of Selectmen and approval of the RTM. We do do an extensive interview. I talk to each person that I, I appoint, whether it's appointed by me, the Board of Selectmen, or in conjunction with the RTM. We get their resume, we have them answer questions, we compare them to other candidates to pick who is the best qualified candidates. And in my first four years in office with a Democratic Board of Selectmen, we actually appointed more Republicans than we did Democrats to boards and committed around. So that's a statement that we were looking for, qualified people. We also raised the issue with more unaffiliates, and we got more unaffiliated people involved in participating in our boards and commissions.
Next question, Mr. Cuthbert. Do you support increases in the education budget to help reduce class size, increase programming, and keep our teachers' salaries competitive?
I think education is the number-one reason people move to Fairfield. When you look at, when you look at, that's the golden egg. That helps property values, that helps families, whether they have students or not. I know what it meant to me, in terms of my education, and the Fairfield School System's afforded me, it let me into get into a top university in this country, and has helped me throughout my entire career. I can't say, pick anything that's, that's more important to everybody in this community than making sure our educational system is in the top 10 in the state, so that people want to come to Fairfield, and we continue to grow our population along with that. So I think within that, it's also important, and I, that the Board of Education and the First Electmen's Office work together as we prepare the budget. I'm thrilled with the comments and how we started to work together this past year, and that's broken new ground in doing that, and so I'm looking forward to what's ahead. We have to make sure that Fairfield education system is one of the top in the state. That's important to everybody in our town, and we owe it to our children.
So most of you know, I, I've served six years on the Board of Education, and education issues actually were the hallmark reason why I even became involved in public service. Education issues are extraordinarily important to me. As a former Board of Ed member, and as someone who's been in the legislature for the last nine years, I have met regularly with the superintendents that we've had, and with the Board of Education members, to, to ask them questions, to see what they need, to work diligently to improve our educational excellence in this town. So I completely support education, but we also have to make sure that we're, that we are spending money appropriately. But we always put education first. Fairfield is known for education, so there's been some sort of, I don't know, comments of late that, that if you think you should scrutinize a budget, that's anti-education. Working directly, having meetings with the superintendent, that's something that a First Electmen should do on a regular basis. It's something I have done as a legislator. You have to be a partner, you have to work directly with them. Absolutely right. First Electmen is correct. Education is a draw to this town, and it will always be a draw, and I will always support education in the town of Fairfield.
Next question, and Ms. Cuthbert, you're first to respond. In managing a budget in the public sector, what is the biggest challenge to controlling costs? And can you give an example of something you have done or would do to manage costs?
So, I mean, at the state level, we, I've watched how they haven't been managed, and as a business owner, how it's very important that you do manage your bottom line. I think, again, to talk about building your grand list is a very important thing to do, because then you don't have to cut important services. Let's face it, Fairfield, Fairfield, if it doesn't work on building its grand list, the next 20 years, there's going to have to be either severe cuts to things like we care about, like education, or, or air services, or we're going to have to raise taxes really high. We cannot stay the way we are, and it's crucially important to build our grand list. But managing budgets, yes, it's very tricky, and that's... But managing budgets, yes, it's very tricky, and that's why it's important that you work directly with your department heads, and you spend a lot of time meeting with them to find out what is going on on the ground in these departments and to know exactly how that money is being spent and also what they are doing.
There's no question. When you look at a municipal budget, we're primarily a service organization. So, the number-one thing that drives the budget is labor costs. 70 percent of our budget is labor. That means having a good working relationship with the unions because we need them. It's not a function of coming out of negotiation and winning or losing. It's a function of coming out of negotiation with something that works for both parties because nothing is more important than having motivated workers when it's -- they're the ones that are delivering the services to us. When you sit here and realize during Storm Nemo, that five-foot snowstorm we got, that our DPW guys stayed that night when they didn't have to. That way, they were here the next morning. You can't pay them to do that. They did that because they cared about our town, and that's the kind of relationship you need. We have it with our police. We have it with our fire. We've worked hard to make sure we have it with all of our unions going through that. There's nothing more difficult than managing that relationship, keeping costs under control, which we've done. If you go back and look at our labor union settlements, you can see that we've done better than any surrounding towns in terms of how we've done that, and that is the number-one thing you can do to help manage the budget as you proceed for it.[690.51][690.51](pause)
There's another question that I'd like to touch here as well. What do you see as your role and obligation to coordinate and oversee the activities and purchases of town departments?[705.82][705.82](pause)
It's very important. So, in looking at that, the first selectman actually is involved in signing purchase orders that go out, and it's important to sit down and review those, see what's taking place, and be aware, and making sure those are coming back to what you're expecting to see happen as both we go through the budget process, and we go through capital planning, and as we meet with department heads throughout the year in terms of what projects are going on, what their department needs, and to make sure that they're both properly funded and appropriately funded. Do we get that money through the budget? Do we get it through grants? What's available? Do we have to bond for it in terms of our nonrecurring budget? So, I think that's a very important point of what's taking place.
So, absolutely. So, you need to sit down with your department heads and know what's going on in each of these departments and scrutinize these specific issues in a serious and specific way. When you're meeting with department heads, you know what's going on in those departments, and you can work together to figure out creative ways, modernizing technology, putting certain controls in place. I just read a book, actually, recently, that Gavin Newsom wrote, who was the former mayor of San Francisco, and he talked about how he modernized town government, which was sort of stuck in a bureaucratic maze. These are things we can do in our town to make our town more efficient and more cost-effective.[794.99][794.99](pause)
All right. Next question. Mr. Petro. Excuse me. Do you support the changes to the zoning regulations, allowing buildings to be responsible in the central town? Excuse me. Do you believe Fairfield has overdeveloped in the last 10 years?
So, I'm not sure if that's -- well, I don't like five-story buildings. But at the same time, I'm not sure if this question is -- if they're looking at sort of the 8-30G statute, or you're just talking -- I'm not specifically sure what they're trying to get at with the question.[832.01][832.01](pause)
Mr. Petro, is there anything?
Yeah. I think that when we talk about growing the grand list and specifically growing our commercial sector, it's talk about -- we need to talk about doing it strategically and thoughtfully. That doesn't mean we approve everything anywhere. It means that we -- a lot of us have moved here, and we love our downtown. We love the way it looks. We love Southport Village. We love Greenfield Hill Village. We want to keep the historic character and charm of our town while we do that. However, we do have the southeastern portion around the Fairfield metro center that's our old industrial section. It's not neighborhoods. It's something that is ripe for further development, and I think that that's an appropriate place where five-story buildings and such would work. We've already got one there in terms of trademark, and if you drive by there, it doesn't look out of place. It's not up next to a Cape Cod house or something small on that side. So, I think where appropriate, we have to look at that.
So, absolutely. And the metro center, which has not developed those types of projects in a strategic way, it does feel like we're not following a master plan in town. You look around, and there's just a development here or a development there. It doesn't seem like there's a cohesive review of how exactly we are building our town in a way that is strategic and respects the neighborhoods. Just to follow up, I mean, the 8-30G statute, for example, has put us in a position to be -- to have predatory developers coming in and building things that are not in character with neighborhoods, and it's happening all over the town and has been happening for the last 10 years. So, I think we need to work much better with our Affordable Housing Commission to make sure we don't have those developments, that we are actually strategically building affordable housing throughout the town in areas where the town wants to have it, not four-story buildings with 100 units plopped in next to Cape Cod's and ranch houses.
All right. Next question.
Well, no. I'd just like to agree that I think the 8-30G is another statute that comes in and overrides our town rules, and I think that it would be great if the state would modify that to work with us better, so give the town more input and be part of the dialogue in terms of how we integrate those developments in our town. Right now, predatory developers can come in, take advantage of that, and just ignore all our local rules, and that's just not right.
So, if I could just follow up, as a legislator who was elected in 2011 and has served on the Housing Committee for nine years, I was one of few people who actually was the first to change any language in the 8-30G statute in 30 years. I mean, that's how difficult it is to change anything, and that -- those changes were vetoed by Governor Malloy. And with all due respect, I sat in those committee meetings for nine years, and I never had the first selectman come up and speak before a committee or talk to the governor or say anything about this publicly at those meetings or in Hartford. It is extraordinarily difficult to get this statute changed. The majority of legislators, the majority party in the legislature, does not want any changes to this statute. I pleaded with our town bodies and our first selectman to please be more proactive on this in 2012, in my second term in the legislature, because I saw how difficult it was going to be to change this statute. When you don't have the numbers, you can't change the statute, and that the town needed to do what Darian did, partner with developers and build affordable housing throughout the community where you want to have it and not be subjected to predatory development. That did not happen, and now we have a 40-unit proposal on High Street, is similar to the 100-unit proposal in Southport or the other 40 units that went on Moritz. This has been going on in our town for almost 10 years, and there has not been any proactive approach to stop it.
I've got to answer that. Ms. Kupchak is, again, misstating the facts. I've gone up to Hartford whenever I've been invited. In fact, I went up with other first selectmen, specifically with Mayor Blake from Milford, to testify with state leaders on what was taking place there. Second, 8-30G's been around for more than 10 years. It's been a problem for much longer than that. Third, we do need some help from our state legislature in terms of changing 8-30G. All right? And I know that we are working with our Affordable Housing Commission here. We do have an affordable plan. Our Economic Development Director has put together a roadmap in terms of how to get us to a moratorium. Now, a moratorium is step one. It doesn't solve the problem. It just gives us time to catch our breath and do some further development in terms of what we're looking for. We have met with other towns, Darian, New Canaan. They have and had available more land, and they also had a trust fund, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, put up. We have established one modeled after theirs so we can start to create funding. So, we're in a position to take steps like they did. So, we have learned from other towns in terms of what's taking place to put Fairfield in the best shape. We do have an issue in terms of providing for affordable housing. We want -- we want to be welcoming for everybody, but we also want to do that in a way that integrates it properly in our community and sets those housing developments up along areas where there's mass transit, where there's easy walkability. And when they put them just anywhere based on a developer's whim, those components aren't there. It's not integrated in our community. It's not the best for the folks that are going to live there.
And just again, in 2012, the Affordable Housing Blueprint document hadn't been updated in over 10 years, when we started getting attacked by predatory development, which started about 10 years ago in a real significant way. Yes, the statute is 30 years old, 30 years old, and the only change that's ever been made to it in 30 years was by me. I was able to work bipartisanly and get that statute changed. And let me just say, it literally took thousands of hours of meetings, thousands of hours of meetings, to get small changes done, and that is why I pleaded with our town, our first selectman, to please start taking a proactive approach. When the Affordable Housing Commission finally started to work to update our affordable housing plan, it was already almost too late. And when it -- once it was completed, we never really had any proactive approach to making sure we were implementing these things. You have to implement them. The first selectman in Darian worked with developers and built an affordable housing, all affordable housing units, and reached the moratorium. We should have been doing that back in 2012, and we wouldn't have 40 units going in on Judd Street or the 100 units in Southport. It's proactive approach. Yes, the state statute is lousy, but if you can't change it significantly because you don't have the votes or you're not in control of the governor's office, you have to take control of your own town.
Just a moment. I would point out that where Ms. Kupchak got it correct is we did start updating that plan in 2012. That was one year after I took office, so it was one of the top priorities in doing that. We did run that plan, updated plan throughout the entire town, so everybody was aware of what we were doing and what was taking place with that. And we have gone out and talked to other towns to look at what they've been doing and learn from them so we can incorporate best practices down here in our town also. And I would point out that whatever changes were made to that legislation did not help Fairfield at all. It did help other towns. There were things specifically written in there for Milford and other communities, but it did not help Fairfield reach -- get any closer to our first moratorium at all.
And just to comment on that, a certain senator who was part of the majority party made sure that that certain language was included. Unfortunately, I'm not in the majority party. But we did make changes that allow seniors to count for more percentage points, and once again, that was changed four years ago, and the town has not partnered with the Affordable Housing Commission to build any affordable housing together with the town and the Affordable Housing Commission. Instead, we're still chasing developments that are being built by predatory developers.[1376.51][1376.51](pause)
Next question. Mr. Petro, you're first to respond. Almost a full year ago, the Town Sustainable Task Force announced the results of its recent survey. 91 percent of respondents agreed that our town should provide residents with more information on how the community can support sustainability and environmental preservation. What ideas do you have to implement such a program?
I've been working with the Sustainable Housing -- not Sustainable Housing, Sustainable Task Force on a number of areas. One of the exciting things about the sustainability plan is it's so comprehensive. It touches so many different aspects, so many departments of our town. We have looked to promote -- work with them on both different events, everything from the electric vehicle show to the -- what, we just started a composting program right now in town. We've looked at recycling mattresses. We have promoted solar power, both in terms of town projects. In fact, 25 percent of the electric power our town uses comes from solar power, to having over 400 homes in town that are using solar power. So, we've been aggressively promoting sustainability. That should be one of the hallmarks of Fairfield. We're number one in the state at it. We've looked at models of towns in New Jersey that use that to promote, both in terms of residents coming in as well as businesses coming in. We want that to be part of our economic development plan in terms of how we market Fairfield.
So, I really have to applaud so many people in our community who have served on the various boards and the Sustainability Task Force and have done -- I mean, I think Fairfield is probably one of the leaders in sustainability and conservation issues because of the citizens of our town who have taken so much of their time to dedicate, and some of them are here tonight, Mary Hoag, who has just worked so tirelessly, and Alexis Harrison, who's back in town, and Catherine Braun, and so many others who have worked so hard and given so much of their time to research and bring these proposals forward to our community. And I'm really proud of our citizens for doing that, and I look forward to partnering with them. I'm proud of being named an environmental champion in the legislature for year after year by the League of Conservation voters. It is important that we work with these people and support them because it is important that we do sustainability proposals in our community. It makes us more desirable.
All right. Next question. Mr. Petro. Were you in favor of Mill Hill's expansion to 504? If so, why? If not, why not?
So, like I said earlier, I served on the Board of Education for six years, and I was chairman of the Facilities Committee, the first one of the Board of Education that put together a long-range plan of building projects that were needed in our town. We had town bodies saying to us when we would come to them for a building project, you know, here you come with this project. We had no idea that you wanted this. So, what we decided to do as a board was put together a comprehensive list, and we spent probably, I would -- almost two years putting it together. And what it did was put all the projects in line, what was needed, how much it was going to cost, and how we wanted to do them. And when we were working on that, from being involved in education issues even prior to being on the Board of Ed, we had done a lot of work and a lot of research, and what we found that was 504 was the best model because it allowed a school to grow if your population went up, but it also -- it was okay to keep it if the population went down. Because what we learned over the years was, population goes up, it goes down. It goes up, it goes down. So, if the site would allow it, if the site had the ability to take it, and if you were opening up the envelope of a building, it made sense to build a school to 504. So, yes, I would have supported that because it's something that I actually helped write when I was on the Board of Education.
The answer is yes, and I wish Ms. Kupchak had stepped forward back then and convinced some of her colleagues to vote for it, and we'd have a 504 at Mill Hill.[1642.61][1642.61](applause)
So, I would like to say, I'm not sure -- I wish the first selectman could have worked with the governor to do some different things, too, over the last eight years. You can't convince other people to do anything. You can share your opinion, but you can't compel someone to do something, just like when Governor Lamont wanted to move the teacher pension costs over to Fairfield. I mean, we were all there fighting against that. You know, you have to -- you know, you can't compel people to do things that aren't within your purview.
I would think that, one, as a bipartisan leader, certainly, I've been able to do that, and I've been elected by Republicans and Democrats to different positions because they respect my opinion, and I've been able to fight for Fairfield for that. But all I'm asking is Ms. Kupchak have stepped up and told us where she stood back when the votes were taking place, so we'd know that, and we wouldn't have to wait six months to find out what she thought about 504.
With all due respect, I was a state legislature and state legislator, and I have no vote in town bodies. So, I'm not sure. I talked to people on the phone, told people what I thought, but other than that, I'm not really sure what exactly you would have liked me to do.
Just what you're doing now, just stand up and say, hey, I'm in favor of 504. You could have come to any of the public meetings, written a letter to the editor, even written some emails to did that.
Well, excuse me. So, is the first selectman suggesting if I wrote a letter to the editor, magically we would have a 504?
No. It means we just wouldn't have to wait six months to see where you stand.
A lot of people always knew where I stand. I was chairman of the Facilities Committee on the Board of Education that put the policy in place for 504 buildings. Anyone in town who knows anything about education knows exactly where I stand on that issue.
I'm just surprised you're saying that your opinion wouldn't have carried any weight with your colleagues.[1764.47][1764.47](applause)
All right. Next to respond first, Mr. Petro. What are the responsibilities of the two selectmen beyond the first selectman in the much-discussed contamination issue? What are the responsibilities of the two selectmen beyond the much discussed contamination issue? What are the responsibilities of the two selectmen beyond the first selectman in the much discussed contamination issue?
I think simply to make sure they're updated, and we did have several updates on the pile development issue in front of the Board of Selectmen, so they had an opportunity to ask questions and follow up. As members of the Board of Selectmen, they can certainly meet with department heads elsewhere to get, make sure they are fully appraised of the facts for anything, any project going on in town. So I think the, again, same from a standpoint of making sure that their questions are answered, their voices are heard, and their opinions are made known.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
What are the responsibilities of the two selectmen, other than the first selectman, in the much discussed contamination issue?
So the Board, as I expressed earlier, the Board of Selectmen, per the charter, should have been involved in the contract, which they were not. And when all of this was uncovered, to be more specifically, when this was all uncovered and the town filed a lawsuit against the Julians after numerous red flags were flown all over the place, the first selectman decided to put the case into arbitration and not a civil action, which automatically sealed all information from the public. And the Board of Selectmen were never even part of that. They weren't ever even allowed to be part of making that decision. So frankly, they didn't have a whole lot of knowledge, and they weren't privy to a lot of information until after the fact and through certain procedures and executive session issues where they weren't really allowed to speak openly after an executive session meeting.
Again, Ms. Kupchak is not accurate in her remarks. From the top, there were updates before the Board of Selectmen so that the selectmen were updated. In terms of the civil action that was taken, that was taken to recover our $300,000 cost we spent on cleaning up the PCB contamination at the pile to remove that all off-site. And since then, the our attorneys have routinely kept the Board of Selectmen updated, correct in private executive session because that's where the strategy, legal strategy has taken place. We don't want to discuss that in front of our opponents. However, let's be clear that, in fact, as much as the public is not sitting in on the arbitration sessions, we hired a court transcript to transcribe all of those sessions, and we have made those sessions public so the entire town can see every single word that is spoken in those sessions.
All right, and next to the last one, we get to the time for spoken statements. We'll ask the timers to clear their stop walking. You can, and they will have two minutes. And Ms. Kupchak, just a second.
One second. Am I starting a new time now, or?
No, no time until you start.
Are you ready? My timer ready?
Yeah.
Oh. I just want to make sure you're ready. I first want to thank the League for allowing us to have this opportunity, and I wrote my comments, so I will share them. I have the commitment and the passion and integrity needed to lead Fairfield into the future. I look back at my past, and I believe every experience and challenge in my life has prepared me for this position. I grew up in Fairfield, and I have been married for 34 years. I have invested and put down roots in my hometown with my husband, Peter, where we bought our first home soon after we were married. As a young woman, I attended college, worked a part-time job, raised a child while starting a new business with my husband that's been successful for over 30 years. I understand firsthand the challenges that working families in Fairfield face every day. It was never my intention to be involved in politics. I volunteered for my son's Pop Warner and Little League teams. I was a room mother. I joined the PTA. And I became, as I became more active, I saw growing frustration from parents with local politicians ignoring their voices. So I founded a grassroots group called One Voice for Education, and that's where my career in public service began. In 1999, I was elected to the representative town meeting, and while on the RTM, I fought to reopen Fairfield's second high school. I voted to build a third middle school. I worked hard for a new Burr Elementary School. And after students and staff became ill from toxic mold at McKinley School, I successfully fought to convince town bodies to demolish the poorly maintained building and build a new school for the McKinley community. In 2002, I was offered an opportunity to work for Congressman Chris Hayes, where I learned valuable skills and lessons working in a congressional office. Those are lessons I still carry to this day. In 2003, I was elected to the Board of Education, where I chaired the Board's first-ever Facilities Committee, which included a long-term strategic plan. I was elected to serve to the Connecticut General Assembly in 2011 and have worked very hard to represent the people of Fairfield for the last nine years. All of my life experiences as a wife, mother, business owner, local elected official, congressional staffer, state representative, volunteer, education advocate, and a caregiver for an elderly parent, I
The time is up, and I apologize. I thought you were going to be notified when you had
Okay, well
You have left in 30 seconds left, so finish your sentence.
30 seconds? Okay. "I am prepared for the responsibility to lead Fairfield with honesty, transparency, and accountability." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kupchak, you have two minutes.
This election is all about Fairfield's future. It's about the person who is best qualified to lead us through the opportunities in the years ahead, as well as the challenges we will be facing. Looking at town finances, we've had the lowest five-year tax increase in the last 25 years. We've restored our AAA credit rating, and despite the Connecticut economy, Fairfield is in the best financial shape ever. This provides us the freedom to set our own priorities and to control our destiny. Looking at education, this is the number-one reason people move to Fairfield. Despite significant cuts to state aid, Fairfield schools are fully funded. We've invested in Riverfield, Holland Hill, Mill Hill, Sherman, and Ludlow High. We've invested over $7 million in school security. 65 cents out of every tax dollar is spent on education. I'm committed to keeping Fairfield schools in the top 10 in the state. I know what a Fairfield education meant to me, and we owe the same thing to our children going forward. Looking at our seniors, we've grown from 500 over 3,000 members at our senior center. I'm committed to cutting the senior tax rate in half so our seniors can afford to stay in our town. I'm committed to working with developers to build affordable and senior-friendly housing. Looking at economic development, we are the number-one most business-friendly town in the state. And again, despite the state economy, we have a 90% commercial occupancy rate and a vibrant local economy. In the eight years I've been first selectman, we have grown our grand list value from the low point 10 years ago. This past year, we achieved the highest growth in value in over a decade. I helped establish the Fairfield Five, five towns working together to combine resources and dollars to grow our joint economy. In summary, I have eight years of effective leadership and proven results. I have the skills and experience to lead us into the future, to take advantage of these opportunities and overcome any challenges. I'm excited about Fairfield moving forward, and that's why I'm asking for your support on November 5th. Thank you, and thank you to the League.
We have the League of Women Voters, so I do thank you candidates for making this debate possible, and of course, thank you to the timers and all the business volunteers who worked on this. And I'm sure I don't have to remind any of you to vote on November 5th. Thank you very much. Thank you.
[applause] Oh, boy. How are you? [laughing].[1757.21]